...citizens commenting on any agenda items, I only see one citizen sitting out there. Tell me, citizen, do you have anything for us? Nothing? Okay. So we'll start out with staff reports, if we have any of those.
Okay. I'm first on the agenda with a presentation on the Parks and Recreation Department accreditation. So, the Parks and Recreation Department started really about, I'd say 12 to 14 months ago, working on the standards required to be nationally accredited. So, we feel like we're close enough to say we're gonna make it and talk to you all about it. Our visit is scheduled for June 20th and our report is due April 11th. It's an electronic report that'll be reviewed and if they think we're close enough, they will send a visitation team out, which is scheduled for June 20th. You'll have an opportunity to visit with the visitation team as well. And I have a CD. It is about eight minutes long, but I think it really explains the program better than I can. And it's a lot more fun than listening to me talk, so I'll get that started.
Have we had accreditation of the parks before?
Parks are American landmarks. By providing opportunities for productive and enriching-
We need a teenager.
Nobody tell Patrick, okay?
By providing opportunities for productive and enriching leisure time pursuits, by encouraging healthy lifestyles, and by preserving natural and cultural resources, parks enhance the quality of life for everyone. Today, over 10,000 park and recreation agencies serve more than 300 million people across the United States. To give those millions of customers the assurance of excellence in the management and operation of their parks, the Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies, CAPRA, established national accreditation standards in 1993 and developed a system for measuring how agencies stack up against those standards. Since the program's launch, park organizations, large and small, from all areas of the country, have earned CAPRA's seal of approval. Those agencies have seen the benefits of accreditation firsthand.
In St. Paul, Minnesota, we're incredibly proud and passionate about parks and recreation, our department, and how it has grown in our city and how important it is to our city as a whole. The accreditation process, it not only validates that, it allows us to take a look at ourselves through someone else's eyes. And I think that's what is so valuable. It's critically important to be proud of your department. It's even more important for that to be validated and for you to gain ideas and confidence through someone else's eyes.
The top reason I would support accreditation is that it truly becomes the proof. It becomes the difference between we think and we know. Without accreditation, we think we have a good agency. When you're a CAPRA-certified agency, we know we're a good agency.
The positive outcomes are multiple. Accreditation boosts staff morale and encourages collaboration. It improves program outcomes. It identifies cost efficiencies. Agencies that have completed the accreditation process universally agree that the self-assessment significantly bettered their operations and the services they provide to the public.
There are many values of accreditation to our agency. We have gone through the process and by getting everybody involved in the process, it brought us together as a team and as a department. It also allowed us to get other departments in the city involved: fleet services, police, fire, all of those that had to deal with some of the standards in accreditation. So it was an excellent process to go through for us.
Accreditation really guides us and forces us to really think into the future, to really think about what's coming and what's next. We have a Parks and Recreation infrastructure in St. Paul, Minnesota. Now what we need to do is make sure we keep up with the changing demands. And it forces us to really put on paper where are we going, where are the demographics going, where is the community going? And accreditation has really given us the structure internally to do that.
The value of accreditation to our agency is that it builds an extremely high level of trust among the staff, among the public, as well as it impacts upon our future. The value of that can simply not be measured in terms of what it does with regard to providing a guide and a sense of direction for the entire staff is what makes it so valuable to us.
The benefits come with a commitment to CAPRA's national standards of excellence and best practices for parks and recreation. Accreditation is based on compliance with nearly 150 standards in 10 categories covering every aspect of operations. Agency authority, role, and responsibility. Planning. Organization and administration. Human resources. Financial management. Programs and services management. Facility and land use management. Public safety, law enforcement, and security. Risk management. And evaluation and research.
I support agency accreditation because you are setting yourself up against the best practices in the country. And you and your staff are working together as a team and your board to achieve this high level of excellence. And you can't go wrong when you're achieving for the best.
Well, I think if you look at the 10 fundamental areas of accreditation, every one of them have a major impact on your operation and whether it's the safety procedures, if it's your maintenance and operation procedures, your record-keeping, all of those are gonna make you better. The planning processes that are in place, the risk management program, they make you a better agency and they also provide a better program, better service to the public. And I think it gives you much greater credibility with the community and your participants, knowing that you have many of those practices in place and that you are gonna be a very sound, fundamentally sound, organization.
The field of parks and recreation is a dynamic one. We must respond to changing public priorities and interests, to trends in fitness and leisure pastimes, to shifts in demographics, to budget constraints, and more. And, as we change with the times, it's equally important to demonstrate credibility and show our commitment to providing the highest possible level of service. Accreditation accomplishes both these goals. At first glance, the process may seem long and arduous, but if planned properly and routed carefully, the road to accreditation can be smooth and straight with no potholes or Step one: review standards. Step two: achieve organizational buy-in at all levels. Step three: submit initial application. Step four: organize accreditation team. Step five: complete self-assessment. Step six: post-visitation team. Step seven: attend accreditation hearing. Step eight: receive recognition of accreditation. Accreditation is a promise of quality and a guarantee that high professional standards are being met. For customers, it is an affirmation of value received. Just as community members look to law enforcement accreditation to show that their local law enforcement agency is providing the best service possible, so too can park users look to CAPRA accreditation as proof that they are getting the best in the way of parks and recreation. And accreditation is more than a testament of excellence for today. It's also an assurance of continuous improvement into the future. Going through accreditation self-assessment helps agencies identify what's missing from their processes, procedures, and policies. It educates staff on the best management practices of their profession. It builds teamwork, collaboration, and understanding of operations. It results in better parks and healthier communities.
Any agency that's thinking of going through accreditation, I would encourage them to do that because ultimately, anything that gets studied and measured does get improved. So I would encourage any agency, take the plunge, make the effort, you will come out of it a better agency.
Anyone thinking about taking on accreditation should really, really think seriously and take it seriously and in fact, do it. It is worth it. It is worth the time, it is worth the energy. Your department will be stronger, your city will be stronger, and the residents that you serve will get much better service.
For more information on how your agency can earn CAPRA's mark of excellence, visit our website or call (703) 858-0784.
So currently, there are about less than 10 accredited park and recreation departments in the state of Colorado. It's becoming more and more prevalent. So we're excited about moving forward with this and feeling really good about where we're at in our, what they call, the self-assessment. So, and it's, as much work as it's been, it's also been a lot of fun. And we've had a lot of the same benefits and outcomes that you heard in the video in terms of finding holes in processes and having staff come together to work as a team to create new documents and have conversations. So, can I answer any questions?
Ms. Davis? So I have just a couple of questions. So, I guess coming from an industry that accreditation and certification and all that's important, what's the cost of, because that's the other thing, sometimes, so I have two questions. One, what is the cost? And two, I mean, I appreciate and I think it's always good to review processes and get accredited, but are there any benefits? You know, like for instance, in healthcare, you get insurance contracts and, you know, things like that, but I'm not sure, was, is there any other benefits besides bragging rights and making sure you have good processes and some of the stuff they outline there? Is there any other benefit? So, cost and any other benefits you might see in a part of the process that perhaps wasn't outlined there?
Well, I would say the cost is $1,200 annually to be, to have the review. And then, there is a cost to have the visitation team come out the first time. And we, Parks and Recreation industry renews accreditation every five years. I think the police department has to do it every three years. So you would incur that cost every five years. To my knowledge, there are no benefits. There's nothing that's recognized from an insurance standpoint that, you know, because we already do that anyway. For example, playground safety, all our playgrounds are certified and our, you know, staff person is trained in that certification. They would certainly be concerned if we weren't, but the direct correlation to a benefit, I'm not aware of any other than the ones that were outlined.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
So the real benefits are self-evaluation now and continuing self-evaluation and peer evaluation.
Right. And I think, you know, for our department, we have a lot of long-term employees, so I really think the other benefit is even though we don't do succession planning in a real formal way, as the staff in our department ages and retires, this is a wonderful document to have, everything written down and everything in one place.
It probably gives our citizens an assuredness that we have the best staff that we can, that they're qualified, that we're using our money correctly and with a sense of quality as far as the programs are concerned. Do I have another question? What did I have here? Mr. Matthews?
I certainly think it's always worthwhile, and for $1,200 a year or two, keep in touch with the industry to get outside output, outside eyes looking in so that you don't kind of turn in on yourself. I'm a little curious, where are we right now as far as in the, for our eventual goal for parks? I mean, we're in a nine-and-a-half square mile closed area. Is there, are there standards that you help find through these organizations like, you know, per capita, park space per capita or something like that that they find is optimal? Does it help with that planning process?
Back in the day, they used to have standards that were national and then as they evaluated that, they found that the regions are different, geographies are different, demographics are different. So if you go to Florida and they have a lot of outdoor recreation, you don't find a lot of recreation centers like the one that we have. So they stopped doing that, basically, and they decided, you know, there are some optimal amenities that everyone should have, but not necessarily everyone should have the same number of tennis courts or the same number of outdoor pools. And the other thing that's changed in our industry recently is where if you drive to Wheat Ridge Parks, you'll see a playground in every park. The philosophy now is really to have one park that's perhaps has different types of amenities and a playground in a different park. So, whereas before, it was very traditional, every park had all the same items. So it's always changing. Let me just say, we do have standards and we did complete a master plan in 2015 that kind of outlined where we were at.
I was pretty sure we did. I just wanted to say, I think the Parks Department is one of our crown jewels.
Just real quickly, I would tell you that we, after the last three master plans, it's really been determined that we have acreage to serve our population. And so now we're focused on renovating our older parks and updating them.
Mr. Pond, did I hear, see a question over there?
Actually, it's a minor question. I was just wondering if you're successful, it says that you'd be awarded at the October Annual Convention of National Park and Recreation Association. Where is that going to be held?
That is in St. Louis, Missouri this year.
Okay. Any other questions? You don't have to have a buy-in, you're just giving us presentation, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's great.
Thank you.
I think that's pretty nice, we're doing that. I think we can then move on to large event permit policy.
Okay. I wanted to come in front of you tonight to talk to you about the large event permit and give you a little history about it as also as let you know what the current guidelines are and how we're approaching large events in the city at this time. So, several years ago, as Wheat Ridge 2020 evolved and began hosting larger events and festivals became more popular, as well as the growth of the Carnation Festival with the Zopie Circus, internally, the staff found we needed a tool to coordinate information to know, what did the police department need from our event person? What did parks need? What did the event need? And we created what we call a large event packet. So it's really a customer service tool. If you're a professional event planner, generally, you love it because it tells you everything you need to know and where to get it, including sales tax licenses, health department permits, those kinds of things. So, that went, that has evolved and gone pretty well and we've got that down pretty well. And that is hosted in the Parks and Recreation Department. So we take them in and then we disperse them throughout the city and kind of coordinate the needs and get back to the event requister. Last year, I believe, I think it was just last year, Golden, the city of Golden decided to have a moratorium on new events because they had so many of them and they needed to probably focus. I don't know all the reasons they chose to do it, but the effect of that was that they started calling the city of Wheat Ridge, asking if they could have their event in Wheat Ridge. So we really started to think about our strategies around that. So what has evolved really is, in the memo, I gave you a set of guidelines that we're currently following and how we evaluate which events can be hosted or which are a fit for our city. And they are all of those bullet points under the current policy. So we really look and see where, does the requister come from? Are they from the city? Is it Prospect Valley Elementary? Is it an outside agency? What is the benefit to the Wheat Ridge community? What does it displace if it's in a park? Are daily park users, do we have to close the park? Do we have to shut the swimming pool down? Those kinds of things. Do we have to reschedule soccer, baseball fields? We do that during the Carnation Festival and as well as the Kite Flight Festival. So we kind of weigh and balance all of those kinds of items. And then what are the impacts to the city? Resources, so public works, shutting down streets, parks, moving tables, all of those. Do we have the staff to do it? What are the in-kind costs? And again, what's the balance in terms of the benefit to the community? And then if they have some historical usage, they've been successful, they have a well-run event that goes smoothly, that's taken into consideration. So that's a criteria we're currently using to evaluate our large event permit requests. Then I've also given you a list of 11 events that we currently support. Some of them are local works events up on 38th and some of them are in our parks. And we don't charge a fee. Generally, we might charge a processing fee of $50, but a lot of times that's waived depending on the requister. And then if it's in a park, we generally ask that they at least pay the pavilion rental fee to use the park, so we don't have that lost revenue. So I wanted to see, make you aware of it and see if you had any questions about it or that you were comfortable with it as we move forward into 2016.
Mr. Fitzgerald, Scott one.
I have a couple of questions. One is, what is large? At what point does it become a large event?
That's a good question. When it's more, we generally have to either close the park down, close the street down if it's over, you know, 1, 200, 300 people. Something other than, we need to rent the Prospect Park Pavilion for our company picnic and we're expecting 250 people. I mean, that, we do that on a rate. No, that would not be, that'd be a regular sort of routine usage of the pavilion.
And do we require people to pay for the costs to the city? For example, extra police or blocking streets or that kind of thing?
Well, the only large, really large events that have that impact right now, we are supporting and they, I believe, have a council approval. So the Carnation Festival, the 44th Avenue Rumble, and the Kite Flight Festival.
Our discussion. Ms. Davis? I guess my only question is, do you have a request from us? I mean, is there, is this, do you feel manageable? Are you, you know, we don't want to put you in the same pickle that whatever, for whatever reason, Golden changed their process. Are you feeling it's manageable, reasonable? I guess that would be my question.
Well, we, you know, we have had a request for an event to move here. It's called the Blues and Brews Festival. It used to be on Grand View in Arvada. And I did meet with them and vet their event and it really did spur, you know, putting our thoughts together about, is this a supportable event? They want to bring 5,000 people in to Anderson Park, serve alcohol. So we did have some internal discussions and don't feel like we can support that event. It doesn't meet some of the criteria, any, really, a lot of the criteria under the current guidelines that we're using. And we don't necessarily have the staff resources to have another large festival. So, I want to make sure you're comfortable with that. And if you're not, then I'm going to suggest we have some kind of procedure for approval by council for anymore, so that you know the in-kind costs and, you know, what you're actually supporting if we say yes to those kinds of events. And some of it's not even just the in-kind costs, it is the number of, spent quite a bit of time talking to the police department and just the number of bodies they need to support events are not always available. So, and some of that, and some of that has to do with, you know, Chief Brennan told me that a lot of times they're down 25% on a regular basis in terms of staffing just with injury leave-
Vacation.
Vacation, military leave, so they use their staff to fill in at that time and then we use their staff for any liquor events. You know, we're required to have, if you have a liquor event at the recreation center, you're required to have a police officer there. So there's lots of demands on their time. So it isn't even really just the in-kind costs. It can be having the bodies available to support an event or call, be available on call to respond to an incident at an event with a large amount of people.
Just a quick question on the event you just mentioned. Why would it be in-kind? I mean, I guess if someone's gonna do an event like that, wouldn't we just require that here's what's required? You'd have to pay for the police, you'd have to pay for the street. I mean, like why in that situation where it's an outside person wants to have an event at this place? Why, I guess, in that situation, why would it be in-kind versus they would have to pay for that?
I think it's because we, it's sort of the first time that it's happened and we did have the discussion during the Kite Flight Festival, whether that was something, and council was asked, did you want to support the cost of that festival with in-kind staff? Plus, I think you're also making a donation. So this is really the, excuse me, the fourth larger event and we really don't have anything in place. I don't, we don't have in-the-fee policy or any policy that states these events will be charged for. That would be the next step, but we don't have it in place right now because quite honestly, I don't think it's an impact that Anderson Park can handle and certainly not in July when the swimming pools open. So sometimes we never get to that next step.
A new situation, basically. I had Mr. Pond and then Mr. Urban.
Well, Ms. Davis answered, asked the question that I was thinking of, which is, is it typical that these outside requests would be willing to and/or expect to be, you know, to charge? You know, that they want to come here and they're willing to put up the money. I think that, you know, I get the capacity thing and I get the current policy. I do think, I think there's some benefit to thinking a little bit more about the direct benefit to the community as well as the indirect benefit to the community and some of these things. So I would be a little bit careful to say that something, you know, an outside entity wanting to come in and participate in our community, you know, doesn't hit any of these policies. I think, understanding what the benefit of the community is in terms of publicity, things like that. Setting aside obviously the use, the time of year, impact on the things. But all of those in some ways can be quantified and offset if someone's willing to pay for it. To that extent, I think there, it probably, you know, if we're getting to capacity and it looks like from moving forward with many of these repeating from, on an annual basis, that would mean that we're, in some ways, we're at a self-imposed moratorium because we've, we have a docket of things. They're probably gonna renew next year and we're gonna be in the same situation. They're probably going to renew next year, and, and we're going to be in the same situation. So I think we probably do need some sort of discussion of a backup plan so that if someone's seriously coming to us and we're able to lay, outlay the, the costs and, you know, the contracts and the insurance or whatever it is that we would require them so that we can at least keep an open dialogue, but not give away the, not give it away, you know, but, but, you know, be in a situation to be able to articulate what we think the costs are at any given point. And if someone's willing to, if someone's willing to do it and it meets, it meets with our criteria or the things that we need to offset, then maybe we can continue a discussion. Because I, I do think, unless I'm reading this wrong, that many of these events, the kite flight is probably, the kite flight and the criterium actually are the, are some of the newer ones, right? I mean, but these things are likely to continue on and on annual, annual basis. So in effect, we're, we're at a moratorium just by, you know, just by.
Volume.
Just by volume, yeah. So I do think, just for keeping conversations, dialogue open, we probably need some sort of, you know, policy that says, okay, well, we're, we're pretty much at capacity, but here's a way that you can talk to us about your event and, and how we can go through that business as a transaction.
Mr. Urban.
I guess that, to Mr. Pond's point about capacity, looking back at Golden and knowing that the reason why they put a moratorium in place is because they had over 75 different events that they were either participating in or hosting or otherwise being asked to provide some kind of permit in this similar vein. And so if we're looking at 11 events, five of which are in the parks, four of which are road races, that doesn't seem like a significant number as far as Brighton had a similar population as Wheat originally had over 20 to 30 events, sort of similar ilk. And so I guess my concern is, is that we limit it to those specific 11 or even capping it at one certain number, kind of puts us at a disadvantage. And knowing Golden has withdrawn their moratorium now, that they're back up in business because they took the time to look at some of these policies and these procedures around special events. And as far as, you know, specific event, it should in some way cover its own costs or understand what the investment is going to be by the city, and we know what that is upfront. But based on the, the current figures, we're only $200 in revenue in on all the events that we have here. So I think that as much as we would need to kind of keep in mind the capacity of the city, we can grow that capacity by looking at the revenue that's coming in from these different events. And I, I'm not exactly sure what the, the rub is with the Blues and Barbecue Festival and how that's not feasible, because it seemed like the Carnation Festival has even more attendance than that would have, and as to why we wouldn't be able to facilitate that.
Well, part of the reason is the time of year, you know, and closing the swimming pool. So really, when I look at the criteria, my thought is, you know, balancing then brings people in and helps our businesses and we can promote the city, is it also displaces, like, really, the capacity of the park is not such that we could have the swimming pool open. So then, you know, those are people that enjoy swimming, swimming there. So that's, that's the balances that I, that I'm really talking about. Then we can't rent the pavilion. And with the Blues and Brews Festival, and it's partly, a lot of it is the alcohol, they have to fence and they have to charge, you know, to get in.
It sounds like they're willing to facilitate that entire cost, and they've done that at the beginning of that.
That's correct, but there are still then, moving to your questions, I don't really have anything set up. I can certainly do that to then say, if our police respond or they're not comfortable with your security plan, they want to have two officers there, even if, if they can find them, to have their, these are the other costs that you'll, you'll incur. Here are the park's overtime costs. You'll have to find another month besides Jul, July. I really don't have anything against their particular event.
But I don't think they were planning on going in July. It was in September that they were looking at going. It wasn't, and they, and they did that specifically to accommodate some of those types of concerns so they weren't.
I think the, I thought their original request was, was July. So that's an example. I mean, if they're flexible and they can have them, their event in another time that works better, all of those things can be worked through. So really, my, my thought in bringing this to you here today is to, to get this kind of feedback, but for you to understand why we're possibly saying no to that particular festival or another festival. Like it, and I also got another request, you know, for a 5K run on the trail for 500 people on a Saturday, and I said, we really can't accommodate that for very many of the same reasons. Displaces our trail users.
Let's hear from.
The park is at capacity, so.
Let's hear from another council member, please. Ms. Duran.
I was going to say, I would be open to looking at maybe having some different tier levels for outside, you know, festivals and that, that want to come into Wheat Ridge. I mean, I think, I hate to turn anyone away because I think it's great to advertise our city and our neighborhoods and to get people involved and crossed over, but I also think we need to kind of look at maybe having a tier level, you know, here's what your cost is going to be for such and such events. So if we could have that conversation, if everyone's open to that, I mean, I would like to get some kind of policy in place for that. Thank you.
This is, this is new territory we're in here.
Yes, it is.
Ms. Hoppy.
Along the same lines as the other councils have been saying, you know, maybe it's something we could look at where we say, you know, we can do another six events at cost, you know, the cost would be, and lay out the cost for them. Or maybe even change some of our parameters, you know, some of, some of these are schools, and so, you know, the schools doing their, their fun runs, those are all fundraisers. And so, you know, making sure that we still support those with in-kind. But then some of them, you know, if they make money or charge, then, you know, then we, we say, well, you're charging or you're making money, so therefore, you know, we need a percentage or whatever, for that. As far as like with July and, and the swimming pool, I totally understand that. There's also revenue being made off of the swimming pool, so closing that then ends that current revenue. But being able to be flexible, luckily for us in Colorado, we have lots and lots of gorgeous days that aren't just in, you know, June, July, and August. So we could be flexible into September. But like George was saying, I think it's important, the, the, the indirect benefits, I think, are, are very big, and I think it's important to be able to host these things for that purpose.
I was approached by them as well, and, and they are looking at July as the, when they want to have that event. Do we have more questions or comments?
I had one question, and I, I think you're on, been on the right track. I mean, you've recognized that there's a benefits-to-cost ratio, and the benefits sometimes are intrinsic. I was, along the lines of what Denise was saying, I think we have to have a priority list, and we've got something here that's almost an event a month. And I think we need to give our local organizations, you know, that'd be first on the priority. And then above that, maybe we start looking at the tier levels and the costs. I was curious, do we know what other communities are doing as far as a, a fee policy for, you know, like for this, if this, if they went back to Arvada, would Arvada be saying, okay, it's going to cost you this next dollars, you need to provide, you know? I'm sure that when we're on the roads, we're asking for a traffic control plan that they have to provide or something of that nature. If we're not, we probably should be. But are there other fee policies that are around the metropolitan area already?
I'm sure there probably are. I can do some investigative work. And really, it's the same discussion, whether it's at the ridge at 38th or it's in Anderson Park. It's the same, somewhat, somewhat of an impact. And I am, I am going to bring the Police Department in because it's really our largest capacity issue, from my understanding, just other than the other criteria I've mentioned and, and some of the philosophies, you know, that I'm following regarding park usage, that I think, that where I think the priority should be for folks that are using our parks on the weekends. So, but really, the, again, the same, same items apply if you're up on the ridge at 38th, which are really our two locations, so.
So what I'm hearing is a lot of preference, yeah, a lot of preference for local, for our own use of it, and as well as investigation as to tiers or possibility charges, so that it's, it's good for our city. Zach, did you have something else?
I guess when we're looking at this, and, and as you stated, it was specifically sort of spurred out of the application by the Blues and Barbecue event, I'd like to at least get some kind of consensus that an event like that would be possible within the city because it is going to Habitat for Humanity. It's a nonprofit endeavor like all the different events might be, and I think it would be a, a good venue for the city to show off its parks and its city, and that, and would give us a fair amount of traffic into the city. And that's kind of the, the point of some of these festivals is to make that happen. If, if they're flexible in moving the date to September, I want to make sure that we're at least considering that and giving that as, as due.
Are you comfort, I, well, I'm going to suggest, if it's all right with you, that I bring you back a policy for your review with these tiers and what the charges look like. So we'll do a little more work on that. I'll meet with Blues and Barbecue again and have some further discussions, but do I have your direction that we can then charge them for what it really costs us to host, to have that event in the park? They raise money for Habitat for Humanity, you know, they save about $14,000, $15,000 a year, so.
And so I think that, within reason, and, and looking at what other cities have done, they've looked at surge pricing for different parks and facilities as it relates to summertime being a more heavy use. And so that cost is increased compared to a wintertime event and.
Makes sense.
Also looking at the administrative fee, that what does it cost for the city staff to be involved in this? What is our hard cost in, in any event? It doesn't matter with kite festival or any other kind of event. I do think we need to stay focused on nonprofit events or groups that are benefiting the greater good, so to speak. I don't think we need to be commercializing our Parks and Recs facilities by any means. But I think that going back and looking at what Golden has just passed, because they spent a lot of time on it, we can somewhat co-opt some of the policies that they've derived, but still be reasonable because a lot of these, or the majority that we've seen so far, are fundraisers for different local groups. So I, I think that's the other part of this, is that the city's able to sort of leverage our resources, being our physical facilities, into helping these nonprofits raise the money that they're able to raise. And I think that one of the other items, you, you mentioned in the study session memo that there was a neighborhood walk for St. Peter and Paul, and my understanding is that was more of an actual 5K. So I, I don't want there to be some kind of misconstrued.
And I know there's no issue with that particular one. I wanted to, you know, use it as an example, that when they're small events like that, and we don't think there's any capacity issues, they're certainly accommodated.
So I think that when we're looking at those tiers, Golden has a tier system of under 1,000, over 1,000, and then the top tier is over 5,000. So if we're dealing with small events that can be handled, sort of in-house, that's fine. But I don't want to necessarily turn anybody away.
Do we have a monthly here? Do we also have surge for months?
As I had read through the policy that they enacted in, in January, was that from June till September, they had surge pricing, and then every other month it was a lesser price. And that also may help with some sort of spacing issues. But when they're dealing with 75 and we have 11, it may behoove us to understand how are they managing that high a number with a less population, so.
Are not most of those right on their main street?
And that was another question about specific roads being closed and looking at, okay, we know 38th is a hotspot, so we're only going to close that twice a year, once a year, whatever it may be. And so you can't have multiple events closing down major roadways. So their policy.
The businesses, et cetera. I think we have one from Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, I just, I think from what I'm reading, and just, if I'm wrong, we can clarify, but I've got enough confidence in parks management, that, I know you're doing benefits-to-cost ratios. As a council member, I want to make sure we don't try to micromanage and limit your flexibility. I mean, you're obviously putting some thought into what can we accommodate? In one year, it might be 15 more or 20 more because of circumstances, and another year change. So I wouldn't necessarily want to do a policy that would kind of lock you into something that's micromanaged and having to come to us all the time for mommy, may I?
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fitzgerald.
I have a question, and some of these events look like they are in conjunction with local works. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. So whatever policy we come up with has to somehow cooperate with what local works' intentions are and.
And I would just say, there's really two issues for us. One is capacity and staffing, whether it's local works events or outside events that want to use or coordinate through local works, because that's been a conversation with Blues and Barbecue, you know, to have local works sponsor it. So that still gets to be somewhat of a capacity issue, more so at that point for our public works and PD department.
Might also be possible that the Police Department might have to make some policy about hiring off-duty police from other jurisdictions or.
I wouldn't be.
I mean, I know that's not your bailiwick, but.
I will say that it is getting, it is going to be more of an issue, and, and we'll come back to you, but Lutheran Hospital has approached the Police Department and asked for them to have an officer there. So, you know, they have a lot of requests, and now they're trying to accommodate that, and they just have X amount of bodies. So it'll, it does play into the, into the equation on, on what we can support, regardless of where it's located.
Just as a general statement, I, I say my intention would be to allow public parks to be used, to have, have our city known for activity, bring activity to the city and, and fun and things, you know, have things going on, so.
We also have, remember, local works uses a lot of volunteers, and, and speaking them briefly about it, they, they're a little bit, a little bit cautious.
Okay.
But as far as experience and management, I definitely think we can tap into them.
I think that, to that point, the Blues and Barbecue event, as I understand it, has over 200 volunteers coming with it, so it's not a matter of.
I'm understanding that, but what I'm also hearing is, is for variety of opening the door for a lot of events, we have to be cautious as far as using local works to, when they use volunteers. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you, Bill.
Could I get a, a summary of the direction from council?
What I, what I'm understanding is that the variety, the variety of things that could be involved, the, the costs, the contracting, not in-kind kind of a thing, define, define as to levels, as to how large the event is, location, I mean, as police, it's, it's really, it's kind of like.
So, and I guess I should, let me rephrase that a little bit. What, what would you, what would you like to see back?
Yeah, I, I would like a special.
I mean, you want to see a policy with the tiers in it for your review? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ask it that way.
There you go.
That's what I wanted to ask. Yeah, we'll put something together that, that's a recommendation for your review then.
At the same time, I'd, I'd also like to request that there be a specific effort put forward to bring Blues and Barbecue to the City of Wheat Ridge in, in the September timeframe, so that we work with them to make that happen. Because I think that it is something that is a, is a worthwhile event that the Old Town Arvada sort of setup can't handle, and Wheat Ridge is a good alternative for that because of its sort of, you know, close proximity to where it was previously, that that would bring in significant number of Arvada folks to Wheat Ridge. It's a kind of a one-shot opportunity that we have to bring that over here, else they might set up shop in Brighton or other places. So I, I really want us to work on bringing that here. And if they're flexible to move it to September away from the pool season, I think we need to, I don't know if we need a consensus on that or some way to.
Yeah, and I think they also are flexible as to far where it would be, Anderson or 38th Avenue. So there's more than one flexibility possibility here.
We close it when, at the Carnation Festival. Right, when the festival starts, the pool closes. Right.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that we'd want a back-to-back. It's more of a, that'd be a.
We also have soccer games and baseball games and, and programs in the Anderson Building. It's not just, you know, the pool. It's, it's a larger issue of, you know, folks using the park, but.
Mr. Matthews.
Just as part of what you bring to us too, and I, I don't want you to go out and hire a flock of CPAs, and, but not necessarily a business plan, but some kind of a rough ROI type of deal where if, if we have this kind of. ROI type of deal where if we have this kind of expense, you know, with this tier, and if we charge, you know, we think maybe that will be break even or, you know, I would like to know if we're going to double or triple the amount of events that we have there, if there's a financial impact a little bit. And I'm not asking, like I said, to do a full-blown business plan or ROI, but if we just have some kind of an idea, because I think we all realize that getting people here into our city and the name recognition has a lot of value that you can't just put a dollar of value on. But just to see if there's any financial impact that all of a sudden crops up if we get over a certain size, you know, if there's a point of no return where maybe we should not do something.
Okay.
You got everything you need?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number two, which is freestanding emergency rooms.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston, you're going to give us a check?
I'm going to give it a shot. It's a new topic for us, so I don't profess to be an expert yet, though we'll see what the direction is here as to whether it's a topic of interest for council, and if so, do some more research. So I think you're all aware that recently in Colorado and elsewhere across the country, these freestanding emergency rooms have been increasing in frequency. We've had a couple recent land use inquiries in the city, as council is somewhat aware. The facility, the business model itself is kind of somewhere between, as I understand it, a hospital emergency room and a typical urgent care that have been around for some time. So it provides emergency medical services of a more significant level than a typical urgent care, but can't do any inpatient services. There's a couple other unique things about them. As I understand it, they can't take Medicare and Medicaid. There's not a lot of regulation on these uses in the state of Colorado. Some states have chosen to create a little more of a regulatory environment. They're somewhat regulated at a federal level. And with that, I'm kind of speaking at my ability level, particularly with someone in the field at the table here. So Christie, maybe you can shed more light on that when I turn it back over to you. There has been a fair amount of media attention, some, you know, certain print and TV stations have covered some instances. I don't think any real need to kind of go into the detail of that right in this presentation, but we did include a few blurbs in your packet of some things that we picked up just anecdotally. So based on this kind of, I'll just say, new, somewhat new land use trend, we kind of, the question came up back in November, and city council directed us to get it on a future agenda. We had it on an agenda back in January, but I think, I wasn't at the meeting, but it ran late, and I think just ran out of time to talk about it. So here we are, really, just starting a very, in my mind, preliminary conversation to see whether you're interested in researching this topic further, and if so, considering whether any kind of additional local regulatory changes should be considered. And we've provided a few options to consider preliminarily in the staff memo. As I mentioned, we have received a couple of inquiries, one that was associated with a land use application, that was a rezoning application, actually, on Wadsworth that was subsequently withdrawn. So that kind of matter went away. With these inquiries, we had cause to kind of look at our zoning code and say, well, what, how do we classify this as a land use in our zoning code? We don't speak specifically to them. There are lots of things we don't speak specifically to. Based on definitions in our code and the fact that they really cater to people, clients that would otherwise often go to emergency rooms, which are associated with hospitals, we said they feel most like a hospital to us. So we've characterized them from a land use perspective as a hospital use, as opposed to simply a medical office. Medical offices alone, which typically are more kind of eight to five business hours, not necessarily on the weekends, you know, are less impactful in our mind in terms of the types of impacts they generate. So, and as a result, medical offices are probably allowed in a broader range of zoning districts than hospitals are. Hospitals actually are somewhat unique in Wheat Ridge. They're really only allowed as a use by right in one zone district, and that's a planned hospital district. So our, obviously, flagship exempla is in that planned hospital district. Hospitals are listed, are not listed otherwise in our commercial use charts. When a use is not listed in our commercial use charts, then the default position is that they're not permitted. So if someone inquired about a C1 or an RC, just at any of our general commercial zoning districts, we'd tell them that they're not permitted. There's a difference, though, in our mixed-use districts. So in our mixed-use districts that we adopted several years ago now, they would be allowed as a conditional use in the MUC, mixed-use commercial, and they would be not allowed in MUN. So that's really where we're at. And of course, MUC is allowed or exists in the city in a lot of locations, right? So pretty much the whole Wadsworth corridor is zoned MUC. Certainly, there's some exceptions, but a lot of properties on Wadsworth are in that zoning district. MUN applies to the majority of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor, so they wouldn't be permitted on that corridor. And then, you know, here and there, we've approved MUC zonings across the city and MUN zonings. The Kipling, Kipling and Forty-Fourth area was recently rezoned at MUC, so that's another larger parcel that could potentially accommodate this through that conditional use process. The conditional use process in the mixed-use zoning districts is an administrative review process, so it gives us, as a staff, a little bit of additional discretion within reason to impose conditions on the approval, whether it be operational conditions or site plan conditions. So that could be appropriate in reviewing some of these things, but it's a fairly limited range of discretion that we have in that conditional use permit process. So we have tried to give you a few different options to consider in terms of if you are interested, and that's your decision to make in looking at regulatory changes for this land use, there's a few different options to consider. Specifically, point out two, and two chapters of the code. Chapter five of municipal code pertains to licenses, and there's certainly a number of different land uses out there that we require additional licensing for, whether it be a liquor license or various marijuana licenses, pawnbroker licenses. There are a number of different things that, for good policy reasons, we've said, you know, you have to get an additional license, and there's additional review criteria, and in some cases, additional discretion as to whether they'll be approved in specific locations. So that certainly is an option to consider. A second option to consider, and equally valid, is chapter twenty-six, of course, the zoning code. The zoning code calls out a number of different uses through the conditional use process that we've already mentioned for the mixed-use zoning districts, and then for the rest of the zoning districts in the city, there's a special use permit process. And that special use permit process gives you an ability to, you know, consider whether there's additional restrictions that should be placed on a certain use or denied in a particular location because the impact just can't be mitigated. Special uses begin administratively. If there are written objections to the special use that's submitted, and those are determined to be valid written objections, then a city council public hearing on the special use is triggered. The other scenario under which a special use would come before city council would be if administratively, we recommended a condition of approval, and the applicant didn't think that was reasonable or wanted to appeal that, and they'd take that appeal to city council. In terms of the zoning code, chapter twenty-six, you know, special use permit is kind of the obvious example as one option. There's a lot of other ways that we could look at this. I mean, you could, if you so desired, you could limit the range of zoning districts that they're allowed in, period. You could limit the total number in the city, right? That's the approach that we've taken with billboards, with marijuana establishments, that there's just a reasonable number that we should have. You could create separation requirements so that there's, you know, you can't locate one of these facilities within X distance of whatever, right? And that's also something that you've done in marijuana facilities, as well as various other things, have separation requirements. So those are all very legitimate options to consider if you're interested in tackling the topic further. Also, would want to point out that, as a caveat of this discussion at the start, I mean, I don't profess to be an expert on this topic. You know, I think we, as a staff, would want to do additional research as what other communities are doing, what exactly the business model is, what the impacts potentially are. And we probably want to engage the industry, right? I mean, I think they'd have a thing or two to say to us that would help us understand who they are, who they're not, and we could certainly come up with a process for engaging them as well. So with that, I'll let you guys tell me what you think.
Mr. Urban, you want to start?
Sure. Do we know whether the state of Colorado provides any licensure or certification or other vetting for these types of operations? Yeah?
They do, I don't know specifically.
I think as just a general medical use, and in 2014, the legislature considered tackling these as a special category of use, and that legislation just didn't gain traction for whatever reason.
That's what I was specifically.
And I did make a check with CML today, and there isn't anything currently pending at the State House this year.
Well, I think if we could look at what other states are doing as far as licensure of specifically freestanding emergency rooms, so that we know that there's some type of backstop there, whether that's at the state level or whether we need to develop some kind of special use process, so we know specifically what they're, not only from a land use perspective, but just making sure that somehow, I'm not suggesting the city needs to get into the business of regulating these, but we need to know what the impact is going to be to the city and what that license would cost and what kind of other impacts it might have within other businesses.
Are you thinking of license impact or the business impact?
Well, to start with, the licensing impact and what does it cost to vet an entity or a facility to be a freestanding emergency room? What is the criteria or, you know, what, looking at some of the marijuana criteria that we have and how they have to operate and.
Criteria around the whole operation?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, you got a question?
I'll throw a couple ideas out here. I had one major concern looking over this thing, and it's the Medicare and Medicaid aspect. And along with that, I was not sure why they're not recognized, why there's no federal recognition there for Medicare and Medicaid. I don't know if hospitals might be willing to open satellite offices. I'd be more prone to approving that for the next reason I'm going to get to. What concerns me is that these freestanding ERs, if they're not going to take Medicare, Medicaid, and they're going to charge the same prices as Lutheran ER, they're going to become concierge medicine centers. So all of a sudden, they're getting, you know, they're getting all of their regular insurance folks, and Lutherans take, and Lutheran or St. Anthony's or anybody is taking all of the Medicaid, whatever the low.
Right.
Low profit, or, I mean, I hate to use profit, but low revenue sources.
Payers.
Low payers, or no payers.
Mm-hmm.
And then all of a sudden, Lutheran's in a spot where, like a lot of hospitals in a lot of states, they end up closing their ER because it's a black hole anymore for sustainability financially. And so that's kind of my concern there, is if we do this, it's going to be, it's, I think everybody should be on the same playing field. If we're going to have a business, they ought to have to be able to compete on the same playing field.
Okay, that's fair. I think I had Ms. Hoppy first. Did I miss that?
So I just have a, do we know, is Lutheran's ER like at capacity or over capacity, or, I mean, do they have an extremely long wait times? Like, is there an urgent need for us to have one of these, you know, freestanding ER places? Is it?
That's an interesting question.
So.
Ms. Davis, do you think you can offer anything for us?
In the medical world, they'd call that divert, which means they take you somewhere else. No, I mean, I think, a couple things. So Lutheran's ER is very busy. It is one, it was one of the busiest in the states. And a lot of it is because it comes down out of the mountains, and it's the first emergency department you hit. But since St. Anthony's opened, it has opened up their emergency department a little bit more. I don't know that I would use, I mean, but they're not at capacity, they're not on divert, they're not sending people away. So I think that it's not necessarily a volume, you know, that, hey, we had to shut our doors to, we had to turn people away at Lutheran. I don't, that's not the case. But it's a good question. And I believe they're a level three trauma Lutheran is, which I can go into what trauma, but I'll go into, after everybody answers, I'll kind of give.
I have Mr. Ann and then Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, I have several concerns. I guess one is the cost. I mean, I've read it could be four to five times higher cost compared to urgent care, the fact that they don't take Medicaid or Medicare, it's just all private insurance. The other concern I have, too, is it's not a trauma care, so they'll have to send you to the hospital anyway, right? So you have the cost of the freestanding emergency place you've just went to, and then your hospital costs. The other thing I have a concern with, too, is I know that the hospital charges facility fees. Is that correct?
They both.
Well, this, the freestanding emergency rooms will charge a facility fee. I don't know how much that is. So I just, there's just so many unanswered questions for me, and Lutheran is so close that for me, if I have an emergency that an urgent care can't take care of, I'm going to go to the hospital. So I just, I'm not seeing the need compared to the cost for me, so.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
For people who are listening.
Yes.
Urgent care is the hospital, is, or is this is an emergency care?
No, that's separate.
It's different than both of them.
Okay, all right, so we'll get some clarification from our expert over there.
Yeah, it's separate. I've been to one of those.
Yeah. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Okay, I, Christie's obviously the expert here, so I'm sort of waiting to hear what she says, but I, my son has some personal experience with this, and of course, in our packet, we had a lot of.
Right.
Examples. And my son got a very big splinter in his finger at work, and, right, same as the guy in the packet. And he went into an emergency, a freestanding emergency care facility, and there was nobody there who was able to take his splinter out. So he ended up taking his own splinter out and sewing up his own finger. And the bill for that was three thousand, two hundred dollars or something like that. I think this is all about, I hate to use the word scam, but it's kind of a medical scam because they want a bill at emergency room rates. And I think another way for us to handle this would be, I think it should be a conditional use, or it should be somehow a defined use. And I think we should use the sign code to require them to either label themselves as a clinic or as an urgent care facility based on what services they provide, and disallow the use of the word emergency room unless they're really able to handle a heart attack and a, you know, a serious kind of event that somebody would go to an emergency room for. So, but if you're going for an earache in your kid's earache or somebody's pink eye, you shouldn't walk away with a bill for a couple thousand bucks. And I, according to the examples in our packet, they don't accept Medicare, they don't accept Medicaid, and they may only accept, or maybe even not, one insurance group. So you might be in United Healthcare, and they don't accept that, but they would accept some other healthcare. And when you walk in that door, you don't know what they'll accept. So it might be totally on your own pocket, and then they're going to bill at a hospital emergency rate, price, which your insurance won't cover because they consider it a clinic expense. So I think we need to severely regulate these things as a protection to the public. I don't really like the idea of restricting private business, free enterprise, but there comes to a point where it's, it's bordering on a scam, so I think we need to somehow control these.
Mr. Pond, and then we'll have Ms. Davis.
Well, I just want to kind of separate it into two topics, because, and we've been talking about this as we've gone through it, but one is a land use issue, and the other is a consumer issue. The land use issue between the two is the easier of the two, which is to say that I agree with the strategy, you know, using the tools that we have and the policies that we can create, whether it's administrative, planning commission, city council, special use or otherwise. and the policies that we can create, whether it's administrative, planning commission, city council, special use or otherwise. I feel like there's a way to regulate this from a land use standpoint and understand all of the issues that we would need to in terms of adjacencies and traffic and all of, and densities, et cetera, and all those things. We've done it and we've probably done it for harder things. So I'm not concerned about that. But what we have been talking about, I think, is really the other issue. And again, this is not a land use issue and I think we need to be careful to separate those two things. The, what we've been talking about is a consumer issue. And, you know, it seems like the product has not, has not been developed to the extent, you know, that there's a lot of clarity, regulation, assurances, transparency, et cetera, for consumer. Now, I don't know, we don't necessarily, we're not a consumer advocate group, so I don't know to what extent our policies, you know, we're not often in the policy as Mr. Fitzgerald has brought up. We're not in, you know, trying to, you know, help or hurt the market, you know, necessarily in some ways as it relates to consumers. However, in this case, maybe it's so nascent that I think we maybe should be cautious about, about the consumer aspect of this. And I don't know what other examples of that we've had, you know, where there's some sort of product that's out there that we're starting to see a demand for or an interpretation of our land use policies, yet the product is not developed from a consumer standpoint. I don't know if you, if you're aware of any other, you know, in the cycle of things, any other, you know, things that have had to go through some of that, that stuff. I suppose one way to deal with that right now is just to say, we're not comfortable with this as a product. And as we see the market resolve those issues, then we'll be prepared to deal with our land use. And just kind of say, we're not ready to pick up anything on this right now until, until the market deals with the consumer issues. That's kind of how, that's how, that's how I would actually.
Are you suggesting a moratorium?
It's either a mor, well, I don't know, it's a moratorium to the extent that we need one. And I suppose what I'm hearing is, is that there's only, there's only one way to get through and that's a continual, a conditioned use on a MUC zoned lot. But that's an administrative, that's an administrative thing. And so I suppose, yes, we just basically, we direct staff, you know, that that's not something that we're willing to approve, you know, that, and I don't know how we do that, if that's through moratorium. But that's the only instance, right? It's.
Yeah, that are rezoned to planned hospital district to.
Yeah, no, so I guess in that case, yeah, I suppose we have to be, we have to be distinct and say, we're not, we're not comfortable with it. But that's, I suppose that's where I'm at right now, which is until, until the market develops a little bit more, we're not ready to get in the game and go through all of the hoops that we need to, to adjust our land use. Because we don't know, we wouldn't even know, we don't have enough information even to go through that process. And I think that's the real point. All we really should be doing is dealing with land use. But we don't even have enough information to deal with land use. And so I think that that's a reasonable way to, to say, we're not ready yet.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
So, just quickly, I'm not an expert on freestanding emergency rooms. But I, at least I have a little bit of information. So, you know, with it being, you know, to some of people's questions, with it being considered an emergency department or there are certain state requirements they have to have, which is, like for instance, if folks present with an emergency, they need to help that person. They, you know, can't ask what insurance you have, you know, or, oh, by the way, oh, you have Medicare. Well, you know, we don't take Medicare type of, so that's, that's against the law. So they, you know, so they can't even, you know, kind of be a consumer advocate even if they wanted to because it's against MTALA violations with the state, which is a state law or maybe federal. So, so there are requirements from the, from emergency department standpoint. I mean, from a industry standard, they are showing up in more places. My understanding is a lot of them aren't quite producing like they thought they would. So, so that's also a concern that, you know, perhaps it's today's new thing, but tomorrow's empty building. You know, there are some situations where they're doing some property leases inside that area. So there might be a cardiologist's practice that's outside of that ED that's open for business that is kind of, you know, it's, it's just a really interesting dynamic right now. You know, I do think with the issues from the consumer standpoint and, and with the issues of where these are going, how they're, how they're being managed or, and how folks are utilizing them. It is a lot up in the air, which I don't know that it's something that as a city, we need to necessarily, you know, be on the front of that bubble of innovation. And I think going back from a land use perspective and some of the discussions we've had recently with if it be marijuana, if it be storage, you know, that as a city, we don't have a lot of, of space to develop and to bring new business in. And, you know, is this really, you know, a land use that we need as a city? And so I would kind of go back to that besides, I can answer some of you guys' other questions if you have about ER, EDs and that type of thing. But I would go back to kind of the moratorium that, and maybe recommend that, that we just say until some of this stuff's ironed out, until we understand more. I do think their insurance carriers and what they carry is an issue. But I'm not sure how we can, as a council, require a business to take a certain group.
Right.
I will tell you, some of our physician offices in our city won't, don't take it anymore because they're such poor payers. So it's, it's hard situation. But I do think from a land use perspective, I don't know if it's the best use as a city for our land when we do have a very high functioning, safe place for our residents to go.
Right, right. Sounds like, would you, are you making a suggestion that direction? Because I don't have anyone else that wants to speak. Are you wanting to make a suggestion?
I think that this emergent business model is not an emergency in Wheat Ridge and therefore we should place a moratorium on.
You got to throw a pun in with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, you got the pun for the night.
Right.
We had slippery sliding for one day and we, all right, so we have this emergent thing here, okay.
This business model has not emerged to a point where we can really take it on as well as we should. And therefore, a moratorium would be a prudent step to give us the space we need to really kind of understand what lessons are learned from other cities, other states. And I think that'd be the best way to go forward. Doesn't say we're not going to limit it in the future, but just for the time being, I don't know what timeframe we need to set on that, whether it's a year or if it's six months.
You can make it indefinite, indefinite until it's, yeah.
Are you asking us to show patience?
I think.
Be sure you put that in the mail, you should see the look she gave me. Yeah, you've got to record that.
Typically, we've done six months moratoriums, but I mean, certainly it's defensible to extend that out further. A year is probably fairly defensible as well.
So I think if we provided a one-year moratorium on freestanding emergency rooms within the city of Wheat Ridge until we can better grasp it, I think that's an appropriate timeframe.
Perhaps the market itself will give us more information instead of us making up a bunch of land use rules at this point.
And additional puns that we can come up with.
Oh, please. Are we showing our hands in, yep. All right, are you good there?
If I may, just one comment, because I'm not sure we expressly addressed this. But I understand that these freestanding emergency rooms do have like CAT scans and some of the really sophisticated diagnostic equipment. Whereas urgent care, you know, you can go in and get your, that's where you go to get your finger stitched.
Yeah, there's definitely a difference between the two.
Yeah, I mean, so that's for the people at home that are listening. Urgent care is where you go to get your finger stitched. Emergency room is where you go to get a CAT scan to see if you've got a ruptured spleen or something going on.
Thank you for that. Forget it, it's okay.
I just had a question of, is it, is enough for council to tell the planning staff, we're not interested in this right now? Or does it have to be a, an official legislated moratorium? And I'm just thinking about attorney fees.
We'll come back with a moratorium ordinance that would go through the hearing process. And, you know, we've, we've varied in terms of whether we adopt those by emergency or just through the regular publication and public hearing process or adopt them as an emergency at first reading. So we'll have to confront that topic moving forward as well, unless you have further thoughts on that.
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right. Okay, that is the official items that we have. Let's move on to elected officials' reports, which I think we might have some tonight. Ms. Davis?
So I have two things. One is the Gazette notified me and you know how we all signed up for articles. There was no one signed up this month, so if someone wants to take this month, it's due Wednesday. I said I'd bring it up in tonight's meeting. So if you can get it to them by Wednesday, go for it. So that was the one. The other one I wanted to do is provide an update on urban renewal or renewal Wheat Ridge. We had a meeting on Tuesday and a couple of different things going on there. The last report was talking about the quadrant lawsuit and, you know, how they recommended their, the renewal Wheat Ridge attorney to move forward with that. So we already updated on that. This, one of the things that the committee was informed was that there was an, in, in the quadrant contract, there, there was some language that they needed to start by March of 2016, start the construction. However, there, there's also in the quadrant contract that administratively, the executive, the executive of renewal authority, which is our city manager, can extend that. I don't know the exact language. But basically, bottom line was, was that was extended and it was based, it was extended out two years. And the reasons for that was, you know, discussed with the committee on Tuesday and talked about that it was done administratively based off of the actions that renewal Wheat Ridge had taken on, on the lawsuit and that issue, which was, you know, supporting quadrant in the part two and then remaining neutral in part one. So, so that was done at the meeting. The other thing we did, which was quite interesting, which is good for folks to know, is for the first time, I think, in a lot of our renewal Wheat Ridge time world, is we've actually have some TIF funds coming into the city that we can reinvest back into our community. Now, just a reminder that those all have to be on public improvement type of items. You know, I can't, you know, we can't just go and, and do something with the money. It has to fall within the criteria of urban renewal and state laws. That being said, the other thing is, is that it has to fall within that urban renewal plan or corridor. So for instance, we have monies that we are receiving from Wheat Recycleri because of course, we've paid back their TIF funds and now the TIF money's coming back to the city. It's about 50,000, around 50,000 a year that we can use on the 38th Avenue corridor. But we also, as a group, just talked about, oh, here's a fun fact. Okay, so just to give you an idea, some money, so I think as a city or as Wheat Ridge, I think we had a total of 120,000 in our little renewal Wheat Ridge fund. Yeah, in our little coffers to spend, just for a fun fact. Golden has like 2.5 million a year and Arveda has like 9 million a year. That is their TIF monies that they have to reinvest in their city. So, so it's, it's a big difference in how they're utilizing that tool for some of their blight, removal of blight and some of their community needs and to work with that. So that being said, we had these little sheets up on the, on the, on the wall and we talked about different things and what's important. So there is a plan that I'd be happy to have Steve Art, because we were going to work on, make a couple of changes. One of the changes is we wanted to make sure that we had some guiding principles of how we choose to spend the money. And so we brought those out and he was going to add that to the plan. But some other things that we talked about was just like, okay, how would you want this money spent? And everyone there really felt that they wanted, especially, they want the money to be spent in ways that the community can see the benefit and the community can see the benefit right away. So that being said, of the, of the things that were on, on the wall there, I could almost picture it still to this day. You know, there were things like business grants. And folks might say, well, we already have business grants, you know, smarty pants, you're doing something that's already there. But it would be perhaps already supporting a program that we have in place. Not necessarily adding to those coffers unless they need those coffers, but because there are business type of grant funds and monies available through what we provide as a city to the Wheat Ridge Business Association. But it could be something else that supports that. Again, we'd need to be careful because it has to be within the corridor. It can't, you know, where the Wheat Ridge Business District handles, they could do 44, they could do. But this money has to be specific to that area at this point because that's where they're receiving those TIF funds out of that plan. So there was business grants. We talked about loans, but we kind of, we weren't big on loans because we didn't want to kind of get mired down and spend a lot of our city resources and the worry of loans and getting loans paid back. So that was put down at the bottom of the list. Other things included infrastructure type of items, which could be anything from, you know, sidewalks or, we kind of frowned upon doing like drainage and things like that because we really felt that that's really the city's responsibility and, you know, they need to do the drainage. But if it meant added sidewalks or, you know, some things like that, that was a discussion. There was also a discussion around art. There was also a discussion around not only infrastructure like sidewalks, but infrastructure like bike racks, infrastructure like benches, you know, infrastructure of that type. So anyways, we had it in several buckets. When the plan is done, I'm happy to give you guys the finalized plan, but it's not finalized yet. But it was a very good discussion. It was, it was, it was nice to have a little bit of money to be able to put back into our city. And, and so that's kind of what our last meeting was about. So any questions on that or?
No one?
Okay.
Good. So you've got about 120 now?
120,000. And that's the other thing, it's my understanding that it's, you know, a lot of times like you'd be like, okay, let's keep a few years and then we can maybe buy a building or, you know, do something like that. My understanding is there, there is some requirements as far as you can't kind of bank it, you know, it has to kind of keep going into the community. So I'm sure.
Has to utilize property.
Yeah, yeah. You know, but there are things that could, you know, in the end, like let's say, when 38th just booms, I mean, and we are having the TIF funds, I mean, it could go towards a parking structure, you know, or even something like that when we have big bucks, but we don't have big bucks. But we have 120,000 that could benefit that area.
Christie, this has got a limit as far as how many years that this will.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the limit is how many years? And, and so, two things. So the limit is, yes, how many years? So it depends on how, how long it takes to buy, to pay the folks back that made the, you know, the increment that the folks received.
Amount put forward.
Yeah, so, like, Wheat Recycleri finished three years early, so that's good. And so then that money goes into, on that fund. And I believe it's twenty five, is it twenty five years? Twenty, twenty-five years, I believe. And so, the other one that we'll start seeing is from Perrin's Row. I think they just finished all of that, so that, that dollar amount will start ticking. I don't think it'll tick for the first, I think, five years, but then we did have a percentage that they would get 50%, we would get 50%. So, we'll see some of that as well.
Each plan is different.
Yeah, so each plan is different, each payment's different, and, you know, depending on, oh, it's going to take you five years, it's going to take you eight years, that kind of thing.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Kristy. Housing Authority, and I know we're going to get a report on the business district. Would you do Housing Authority, and then let Janice do business district?
Unfortunately, I did not attend the, the Housing Authority meeting, so maybe somebody else would like to give a report on that one.
Talk about the recipe or something, what?
I didn't either, but there was an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement that was fairly technical in nature. Does some of the dates have changed with the, the proposed transaction with Hartman Neeling Investments on the Fruitvale School? And the, since the meat company is no longer part of the deal, references to the meat company were removed from the purchase and sale agreement. So, that was really the only technical matter.
I just wanted to remind everybody that Create Year 38, the last meeting is this week on the 10th, at 6 o'clock at the rec center. And this is a very important meeting, since we're going to finalize, they are going to finalize plans, so I invite everybody to attend and take part in designing your street.
Okay.
Speaking of grants, the Housing Authority made two small grants recently, or business, excuse me, business district, made two small grants, and Racoles is going, we are going to do a matching grant for Racoles to put a new sign on. But the, the big news is, we're working on a new grant category that is called a visual impact grant. And if you are a business owner, and you have an idea to improve the look of your business in a way that will greatly improve the visual impact of your business and the street and the neighborhood, you should talk to us about that. And we're, we're pretty excited about this, because it's sort of an open-ended kind of thing, and there's room for creativity in that grant.
That grant also is, it's for things that don't necessarily fall under the other categories that we already have listed. It was to give the Board of Directors some, some flexibility in being able to make some nice visual impacts on some of the businesses in the city of Wheat Ridge as a whole.
Okay, great. That's great news. CML?
As your representative on the Commonwealth Municipal League's Policy Committee, they had their policy committee on February 12th. I sent along a list of the 27 different bills that we went through during that policy committee. And the purpose of going through those bills from the policy level perspective is to understand whether or not the Commonwealth Municipal League is going to either support, or oppose, or stay neutral on any given number of those bills. And you can kind of look at that, there's 27 of them. The other aspect that was presented during that meeting was relative to the sort of general policy statement of the Commonwealth Municipal League, and looking at their specific priorities as a municipal league. And there's basically nine different areas. Obviously, urban renewal and downtown development, land use authority, fiscal fair play, affordable housing, local tax authority, sustainability, transportation and infrastructure, public safety, and energy impacts in the economy. And so those are the just very broad categories that CML is considering their priorities. And as the legislative session goes along, they'll be providing us with updates as it relates to some of the bills that they've presented to us. In some cases, prior to our meeting on February 12th, there were some bills that they had previously taken a position on, the bill died, and so now it's sort of mute to discuss it. So, that's why I don't want to go into the, each individual bill, because they're in different stages. You can kind of look at those and see how the policy committee voted on it. It was more of a, a vocal vote, as opposed to a, everybody recording how they voted, so to speak. It was kind of an unusual way they went about doing it, but there was representatives from every city in the state, so significant number of people, and definitely an interesting exercise. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. But I sent you an email on February 12th, kind of outlining all that.
Dick, I didn't ask you, would you give us a report on your District Four meeting? Genevieve, if for anybody information, she's at the Washington Conference, along with Pat. I'm sorry?
[laughing]
Oh, right.
My, my other brother, Dick. We had a District Four meeting, and one of the things that I learned there is that it's hard to get people to come in. So, for me being new, I was interested to see how normal dissemination of information reaches out to the public. We had about four or five people there that were actually citizens. We had some discussions on programs going on within the city right now. A couple of the volunteer, like, local works groups were there, and talked to us about what they're doing. Had a couple people talk about parks. One, one item that I'd like to bring forward in the future that came up, and I've heard this before, is that we're still kind of have an unfavorable business profile for people that are trying to do improvements or come into the city. An example that was brought to us by a Realtor was that his client had to spend seventy thousand dollars on a 5,000-square-foot tenant finish. And that part of the issue there is that some of our regulations may be a little stringent for non-structural work to let these businesses come in. And I will follow through on that, and try and talk to us, because I've heard that from several sources now. I think that was the biggest takeaway I had, was that we're not perceived in the community as business-friendly.
And I, and I've heard both ways as well. Let's see. I don't think I have anybody else that I'm needing a report from. As you all know, I'm on Metro Mayor's, I'm on Dr. Cog too, but Metro Mayor's, there's a panel, a specific group I'm with, which is the Colorado Water Plan, because the Colorado Water Plan will eventually, oh, God, I got it, flow out. I got to do a pun in here, right?
[laughing]
Yeah, it'll flow out to all of us. And I had a, second time I've heard a fascinating speech by, and I'm sorry, I don't have the notes with me, but I would love to bring it to council, so that we all would understand what's going on in Colorado, as far as what's, how are waters being used, and, and where we're going to be looking at, at some sort of conservation projects. I will be glad to Eckert, I think was his name, Eckle, something like that. It was fascinating. I think you would all enjoy it, to understand what we were going to have to do looking forward as far as our own, and our own asks to our citizens, as to how we can tighten up our water use, because conservation is going to be a big part of it. Unfortunately, even though we keep conserving, we keep, our population keeps growing, and we still need more water. And we need it for agriculture, too. So, I, looking forward, as I mentioned in my letter, there's a few groups that are not part of council, that I think that I'll be asking for committees for reports from them. It's Cultural Commission, they have an art fund, I'd like to know what they're, what they've been doing. Ad-At, I, I think it'd be nice to know what, what they're, how they're using their, our city monies, as well as the Kite Festival, Carnation Festival, kind of appropriate times, that we'll get some reports on those, so that we know. I'm even thinking maybe Senior Resource Center, we give them thirty-five thousand a year. I think it'd be nice to know how that's working out, so that we have an understanding of what these organizations, how they're, are they using these funds, and are they working for them. So, anybody else have anything? If not, oh, wait a minute, somebody's got something coming up. I don't have it. I guess only just Create Year 38, which is Thursday, and you, when is your, you have a district meeting coming up? Have you got it settled yet?
Yeah, no, I'm setting them all up, so I...
You don't have something yet, for sure?
No, it'll probably be, I was hoping the end of March, but I haven't gotten my act together.
Okay, sounds good. I think we can close the meeting with that. Meeting's adjourned.